To the Republic, for its hands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Court of Attorney, in session? Public comment?
Jeff Don't, I have to, first off, since I didn't actually hear you last week, Larry called me a liar. I'd like an apology for that, as some, the windows are being scrapped at STS and being replaced. But I appreciate being called a liar, it's much like Boots calling me a clown, at least he apologized. So I'll wait for that again. Speaking of liars, Boots, the farmlands, we increased the farmland money, said no county funds were used. Thoughts or Republican determine that was a lie. You lied about that several times, no county funds were used, and you also lied on your ethics forms. Get ready to buckle down for that, because that's going to be another complaint on you. Tax claim office, possibly a sunshine law violation there, meeting behind closed doors. It's not on the parry door, some of the salary board members are there. Tons of extra cash being promised to people, backdoor deals. Making people come back places and channels, why not bring the two women back? Friday, you guys hit nine hundred days, the longest unpaid, unfair, unjustified suspension in the history of the United States. Bring the women back, the office needs them. Parcel locator has been down for at least four weeks, there's been issues with it for over three months. Four different departments have reached out to me, either through text or through my Facebook page. It's crucial to do their jobs. They can't get a response from Ms. Smith, no help, no response. Two people from the public reached out to me, they can't do their research. Falls on deaf ears like everything else in this county. Several magistrate offices, I understand, have those air purifiers that you paid ridiculous amounts of money for during COVID. And they need to be repaired and fixed, and they've been denied. It's like a ninety-dollar part, a hundred-dollar part, and they're being denied. They noticed a difference in them, and I guess when there's another COVID outbreak, then we'll complain about that. Lisa Stevens, no investigation, no police incident, no attorney general, I'm hoping Mr. will pay. Does turn it over to the AG before the statute limitations are up. It was a criminal offense, multiple times, it's admitted, it's in depositions, there should be much more needed filed than that. Speaking of lawsuits, it's the month of March in Schoolville County, which means a new lawsuit for the county. So this here, thirty seconds left, this here is just filed. Hot off the press this morning at 1:00 AM, I got the alert from Pacer. You guys might not even know it, might not even see it, Dave, I don't even know if you did. Forty-eight-page lawsuit against Schoolville County, Kevin Hatter, and Heidi Zula. Another discrimination, sexual harassment, retaliation lawsuit. Forty-eight pages filed against the county, it's a disgrace. He needs to go, I told you that before. I'll take that job when you're ready to give it to me. But I'd like an investigation done on him like you did on women, there are nine hundred pays, unpaid. Windows is unpaid suspension start now, it's black, black and white, and blatant, thank you.
Any other public comment?
George in Colwich, Palo Alto, just wanted to be up here again for the senior citizens and the veterans. And we've here, heard, and seen what politicians are fighting about, and they're doing nothing, nothing for senior citizens. I'm tired of this nonsense, it's ridiculous, I know what they're going to tell me, it's, they only can do so much. But I hear that from all politicians. Well, it's not our job, maybe to look over here, or look over there, or look, you know, start looking at yourselves in the mirror, get a backbone. Speaking of, if you see a wrongdoing, I don't care if you have anything, any policies with it, step up and talk to a senator, talk to a congressman, talk to them. I'm tired of talking to them. It's one person, one person, you're the only one that brings this up. I'm telling you, there's thousands and thousands of people out there in Pennsylvania alone, not just the United States, Pennsylvania alone, that are hurting, they're losing their homes right and left. Have to put up with nonsense like they do in the western counties. Bring a dump, jump from other states into our county. Why? Because we get a little money, we get a little money. Now where does that money go? Let's pay someone the taxes down, let's not put it in our pockets. I'm tired of this nonsense. And if you didn't believe about ten cities, I hope you looked at the potter Republican. And that word, their vagabonds, that's what they're going to start calling people that lose their homes. It's just not these people, it's just not the ones that are criminally doing something wrong. It's all people. Go over here to Palo Alto, you'll see a ten city going up once in a while. You'll see them, take a walk down those railroad tracks, and I'm telling you, it's ridiculous. The United States of America, come on, let's wake up. Let's tell these politicians what they're doing and what they're not doing wrong. It's ridiculous. I don't know what I have to do, what do I have to do? I try not to raise my voice, but if you don't raise your voice, they don't hear you.
Right.
They don't hear you. It's like they're deaf. I'm telling you, there's things that have to be done in this county that are wrong, they should be corrected. Every day, either we're suffering, and nothing is done. That's the United States way. Let's take care of these criminals coming from Mexico that kill people. And don't, and give them the money to live in New York City and all these hotels, and not help people around here. It's just ridiculous.
My name is Laura Krizniewski, I live in People's Republic of Putz, that's the name. If George wants to help the people who are losing their homes and veterans, we would do well to have them load the app on their telephone that the United States government is paying for to put into other countries, so that they can load planes up and fly them to American cities. That way, they will get a card for one thousand five hundred dollars, they will be put up in hotels, and they will be taken care of. I'm here today because I'm very concerned about the Pennsylvania Department of Agriculture's chaplain, Angus Sonna, who is an Amish farmer who runs an association in Lancaster County, Pennsylvania, where a lot of Amish farmers produce organic food and raw milk. And basically, what appears to be happening is that the Department of Agriculture intends to go after anyone who is not compliant, who has an association where they're legally allowed to do business. Angus has only had, he's got, I believe, four thousand customers across the United States. And as I recall, about nearly half the bill, there was a move underfoot to require or to request people register their gardens. This is a very dangerous thing, because what happens is, the government does things incrementally. We started out by saying, well, you know what, you just have to do this. And we saw this happening in other places in Pennsylvania, where if you just register your chickens, and then a month later, the chickens had to be gotten rid of, because they don't want to have them. So it was a ploy, finding out where the chickens were. Even though you have under the Constitution and in certain unlanable rights, where you have the right to feed yourself, you have the right to grow strawberries. But what is going on right now appears to be the removing of private farms and private ownership in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. I would strongly encourage people to follow this case. I'm happy to say that there are attorneys coming in from other states, because it's kind of recognized that Pennsylvania has an unusual judicial system, where the Supreme Court of Pennsylvania has basically determined that if we are not lawyers, and if you can't afford a lawyer, you have to be held to the practice of the law as if you passed the bar. And even though whole one twenty-eight or one thirty, something like that, says that the Supreme Court doesn't intend it an absurd end, I would regard that to be an absurd end, because you're basically guaranteed to be railroaded if you don't, if you cannot afford a lawyer. Thank you.
Any other public comment?
Orleans Diver, North Manheim Township. I apologize if my volume is sometimes increased, but I hear people complain all the time, we can't hear public comment, so that's why I raised my voice, I promise Larry, I'm not yelling at you. And again, anyone who shows up at these public meetings to speak, we are only trying to help, whether it's to point out an issue, protect the interest of the county taxpayers, or to seek assistance for issues affecting public health and safety. We are not the troublemakers, we are the truth seekers. All right, let's talk about the tax claim office. That sinking ship needs all hands on deck. When employees have to spend hours redoing work that has already been done because the original work has been lost under a mountain of paperwork, that is unacceptable. Employees have been leaving that office left and right, why? Why? What sort of feedback, Tony, are we getting in those exit interviews? I would be most interested in hearing what those employees who are either transferring to another office, or they're leaving county employment altogether, what are they saying about what's going on in that office? There are two highly qualified, experienced, and professional employees who continue to serve the world's longest suspension. Again, unfair, illegal, retaliatory suspension. They have a clean work history according to the state attorney general's office and a UC judge. Eckert Siemens was retained two years and four months ago to conduct an external independent investigation. Where's the beef? Where's the report from Eckert Siemens? What kind of law firm is this? Is it, are they still working on it? Has it been issued yet? Is the county asking Eckert Siemens not to actually release that final report? The county has backed themselves into a corner, and you are dragging the county taxpayers along for the ride. No, thank you, stop the nonsense, bring those two employees back, so they can get that office up and running. We still have the DOJ consent decree in place. Why are employees in that office being treated differently? Some employees are rebutted and ignored, while others are taken behind closed doors to discuss options. I'm sure the EEOC would love to hear about that. Admit that the entire situation in tax claim was mishandled in 2021. We had several people in their depositions essentially admitting to that. End the suspension, and concentrate on getting the revenue back to that office, and stop outsourcing to other companies. This entire debacle is costing county taxpayers dearly, thank you.
Any other public comment?
Any other public comment? Okay. I just want to address a few things. Jeff, if I called you a liar, I meant to say that's a lie, not that you're a liar. The windows, as far as I know, for months ago, I talked to them last, the actual windows themselves, not the frames, but the windows are being reused and put back in. And that was the last time I talked to them, that was major, that was a month ago. So, and I talked to Mark Hoover, and I asked him, and he says, as far as he knows, the windows are being reused. So I don't know if they're talking about the window frames or the actual window panes. But if you picture.
They're being rebuilt.
Yeah, but the windows themselves are being reused, the glass is all being, yeah, they had to destroy it. Most of the frames were destroyed when they took them apart.
They had to rebuild them.
And some of the flashing was put in wrong, and they had to redesign the bottom flashing. But the actual windows themselves are being reused, and that's the largest expense of the windows, each pane is.
Two thousand dollars.
Yeah, so they're all being reused. The picture you said, when you said about the windows, that are stacked against the thing, they are the actual windows themselves. They're being reused. Now, some of the frame needs to be rebuilt, but that's, that's true. Okay? So if I called you a liar, I meant to say that was a lie, okay? As for bringing up Lisa Stevens, that happened in 2019. There's nothing we can do about it, it was a.
The statute of limitations is still in place.
That's up to your, to.
Did you turn it over?
The district attorney.
Did you turn it over to him?
I wasn't here in 2019.
But it's rubbed your attention out, it's been said.
Yeah, well, that's, I don't know if it is, so it's up to Mike to look into it, to see, I don't know if it was or wasn't.
Oh, get ready, get ready.
Well, I'm just saying, I don't know if it was or wasn't, you don't have to be combative.
Trying to warn you.
Well, I can only do, you can only do so much. As for the property taxes that he talks about, I was a proponent for the elimination of property taxes for the very first time he ever said it. And I'll advocate for that till the day I die, the property taxes, we need to do something to stay with property taxes. And I know, I know Boots and Commissioner Heston isn't able to attend today, he feels the same way. There has to be some relief, but that has to come from Harrisburg. We do not have the authority to do anything with it, I wish we could. As for the West End of the county, I just wanted to give them an update, because I see it here, is we are, somebody from the governor's office now is attending the meeting, and we're setting it up with the representatives from DEP. I don't know who we have, who is scheduled now, do we have, do we get, we're meeting with yet, Gary?
Yes, I sent you an email yesterday with a couple of dates to go with.
Okay.
Do you have a date?
We sent some dates, well, when you get a representative from the governor's office, you got to try to.
Right.
Fit in their dates.
Couple dates.
You give them a couple of dates, and then they pick one, so that's what we're working on. But now we even have somebody from the governor's office coming.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're working on it.
Thank you.
Okay? So, let's move on with the meeting.
How about Mr. Hatter's incident, is that going to be you investigating?
Well, okay, first of all, if it's a lawsuit, they can't talk about it, and we don't know about it yet. Honestly, this is, like, you get paid, we haven't served anything at all yet, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Public Court, it's Kevin.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm here this morning for the approval to advertise for invitation on the Schoolville County Housing Services Billing Cleaning Contract. Bids are due in the Controller's Office by 4:00 PM Monday, April 8th, 2024. Bids will be opened publicly at 9:00 AM on Wednesday, April 10th, 2024, in the Commissioners' Boardroom and awarded at a later date.
Thanks, Kevin. Engineering, real estate, Lisa.
Good morning. Good morning. On behalf of planning and zoning, approval is requested to appoint the study committee members as listed in the document entitled Planning Team Organization and Responsibilities: Schoolville County Comprehensive Park Recreation and Open Space Plan. Schoolville County was awarded sixty-three thousand dollars from DCNR through the Keystone Recreation Park and Conservation Fund to assist in developing a comprehensive park recreation and open space plan. The DCNR grant agreement requires the county to appoint a study committee who will serve as an advisory committee appointed by the Schoolville County Board of Commissioners, and attached was the list of folks.
Good question, Lisa, how long are the bids that plan within?
I believe we have to update them either every five or every ten years, and we're past due that time, Karen.
Tax claim, Gary.
Your approval of the repository sale in parcel number forty-eight-eight-one-three-nine, Tree Valley Properties at 504 West Market Street in Monoy City, and that was sold, bid was to the borough, and I'm asked for the purpose of demolition.
Thank you. Dave, Prisa.
I am Mike McCann, phoned in for awarding of SBA from the prison. Prison is seeking approval for a contract with Smart Communications Company based out of Seminole, Florida, to provide our inmate telephone service. There is no cost to the prison or county. The telephone service is paid for by the utilization of the inmates by the call of the inmate. The term is for five years, March 1, 2024, and March 1, 2029.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Scott, 911.
Morning, Scott.
Good morning, Commissioner. Next week, looking to request a motion to enter an agreement with Motorola Solutions Chicago, Illinois for emergency call works, telephone system, or onsite remote system support and software. Agreement is for one year, January 1, 2024, December 31, 2024, for sixty-two thousand, two thirteen twenty-nine.
Mental health, Lane.
Good morning. Requesting for next week's approval for a contract with Amor for forty-nine thousand, five hundred dollars for use of eight boards for each month, the month of March through December. These boards need to hold drug and alcohol and mental health, different month initiatives that we are charged with to get information out to the community as per DDAC and mental health requests. The second one is for drug and alcohol, is the approval for request, I am going to shorten it. We're looking for approval to, for our outpatient providers, for all their rates to be raised to match the medical assistance rate that was approved as of this January of 2024. So that is for all the services, not just the ones that are listed here, and again, it's just to match the medical assistance rate that's medical assistance approved, again, back in January. The last part of this addendum is to change the language according to DDAC, which is the very last paragraph, which is to make sure that when we are reimbursing our providers, when they are billing us for Subitex, Suboxone, Subkay, Vipro, Methanol, that we put in the language of actual pharmacy costs, net of applicable client fees, discounts, and coupons. And again, that language is directly from DDAC.
The way this morning, I've been behind a mini bus for STS, but the drug and alcohol wraparound is pretty sharp, all the red and all that, and the numbers they call and ask for, and we put the.
We were rewrapping some of our buses that are due, they were actually past due, they've been peeling, so we have. No, we have. No, we have six, eight buses that we have to rewrap. Three for mental health, three for suicide prevention, and two for drug and alcohol. So that will be coming, the new design should be coming out in the next month.
It looks sharp.
Thank you.
Thank you. Grant writer.
You're not sure. No. Ron Zerman, I'm here for Cheryl this week. Looking for approval, a modification in the 2022 CDVG program moving eighty-eight thousand, seven hundred and ninety dollars from the Schoolville Haven Housing Rehab Line Item to the Willow Street Recreation Line Item. Approval to advertise for a CDVG ABA project at the J.D. Morgan Park in West Penn Township. Bids will be done via Penn Bid, and must be submitted by 9:00 AM Wednesday, April 10th, at which time they will be open. Approval to advertise for demolition projects in the boroughs of Girardville, Monoy City, Minersville, and Shenandoah, also Ryan Township and West Monoy Townships. Bids will be due in the Controller's Office on Monday, April 8th, 2024. Bid opening will take place on Wednesday, April 10th, 2024. Approve a contract with Tri-Vet Contracting Company, incorporated an amount of thirty-six thousand, nine hundred dollars for a CDVG project for the Klein Township ABA project. The lowest bidder, just so that you know, the lowest bidder was determined non-responsive for not including ten percent bid surety, missing all the necessary documentation, and including all the fees that were to be added into their bid price, they did not include, add that in. Tri-Vet was the second lowest bidder and was responsive on all the required documentation. Then I also have approval to enter in cooperation agreements with the following. Borough of Girardville for demolition projects at seven to nine West Augnes Street and 341 West Monoy Avenue. Ryan Township at seven Mansour Road. Monoy City at 512, 514 West Center Street and 520, 522, and 524 Railroad Street. West Monoy Township for at 257 Mount Olive, for 11 Mount Olive, 1157 West Lloyd Street, and for Newtown Road. Minersville at two Sunbury Street and Sixth North Delaware Avenue. I just want to note, the Sixth North Delaware Avenue is using Schoolville County Land Bank grant funds. We put them both out together because they're right there to try to get a better price. So we're going to work with the Land Bank on that one. Also, St. Clair at 26 South Front Street and 146 North Nicholas Street, and Schoolville Haven at 119 Parkway. Last item, approve or revision to the 2021 CDVG program moving eight thousand, one hundred and sixty-one dollars and twenty-eight cents in funds from the county demolition line item to the Klein Township ADA line item.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Mike, there's an attorney's office.
Good morning, Commissioners. Commissioners, I'm asking for approval of contract between the District Attorney's Office and Shelby Hostetter for her services as a part-time assistant district attorney, effective March 11th, 2024. Her contractual rate will be twenty-two thousand dollars per year. She will not have any benefits through the District Attorney's Office for that matter.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Out across the election bureau.
Morning, Alan.
Good morning, Commissioners. With this stand here, to request approval of subcontractors for the election bureau, and approval of the hotter fourteen election for rovers to start immediately for the purpose of office preparation and logistics and accuracy for the April 23rd, 2024 general primary election at a rate of twelve dollars per hour. Rovers to be paid mileage at a rate of sixty-seven cents per mile to be traveled on the election day to assigned polling sites for where needed. They are Mr. Joseph Metz, Bronn Coleman, Carol Conley Sizdek, Paula Warncastle, John Handler, John Gears, Tim Wood, Gary Kiefer, Cindy Drazenovic, Daniel Wachter, James Gustus, and Julie Zangary. In addition, we request the approval to hire the following four subcontractors as needed. There are Mr. Delmar Phillips, Carol Conley Sizdek, Mary Anjulis, and Paula Warncastle for office work. We request the approval to hire eleven drivers to deliver election day supplies and equipment in preparation to the April 23rd, 2024 general primary election, so that we do the judge elections. That would be Mr. Stephen Davis at three hundred and sixty dollars, Mr. William Klinger at three hundred and ten dollars, Mr. James Erby at three fifty, Rory Riley at three hundred and sixty, Jay Tobias, three hundred and twenty, Linda Handler at three hundred and twenty, Delmar Phillips at three hundred and sixty, Darren Phillips with three hundred and ten, Gary Kiefer, three hundred and forty, Vivian Rupert, three hundred dollars, and Keith Pogash at three hundred and twenty dollars. We also additionally approve to hire eight additional election day machine delivery drivers, which actually takes the scanners to the precincts themselves in preparation of the April 23rd, 2024 general primary election at a rate of fourteen dollars per hour. In addition to requesting approval to hire the following eight subcontractors as needed. There again, Mr. Delmar Phillips, Andrew Garkowski, Gary Goodman, Jeff Kobach, Keith Pogash, Stephen McCord, Darren Phillips, and John Gears. We request the approval to hire four resolution board members for election night at the Estee Yestie Building for the general primary election on April 23rd, 2024. There is Renee Buchanan at a hundred dollars, Edward Barkett at a hundred dollars, Michael Pagoda a hundred dollars, and Mr. Bob Ilon for a hundred dollars. The election bureau also requests additional to hire the following five subcontractors and additional three individuals for the computing board at a rate of seventy dollars per day, beginning three days after the election, April 26th, at 9:00 AM, the election bureau office to begin the two percent computation and canvassing of the returns from the general primary election dated April 23rd. There are Mr. James Clark, Joanne Dower, Mary Ann Anjulis, Sharon Child, and Ann Ann Karpovich.
Thank you, Alan. Office of State Services.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Approval of an addendum to extend the program funding contract for another three. Um, approval of an addendum to extend, uh, the program funding contract for another three fiscal years with DiCon, Child, Family, and Community Ministries of Middleton, PA uh, for the P A Meddi, which is Medicare Education and Decision Insight Program. P A Meddi Regional Staff, Senior Community Center Services, Health and Wellness, Health and Wellness Evidence-Based Programming, In-Home Meals, Volunteers Serving Seniors, COVID Vaccine Access, and the Senior Community Center NonCompetitive Grant. Uh, contract caps by fiscal year are fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, one million, seven hundred seventeen thousand dollars and seven hundred seventy-four dollars. Fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five, nine hundred eighty-four thousand, ninety-nine dollars, and the same for twenty-five, twenty-six fiscal year. Um, fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four is a hundred fifty-three thousand, five hundred sixty-eight dollar increase from twenty-two, twenty-three due to the American Rescue Plan funding. Um, funding for P A Meddi Regional Staff, COVID Vaccine Access, and the Senior Community Center Non-Competitive Grant are not in the budget caps for fiscal years twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-five, twenty-six.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Solicitor's office.
Good morning, Commissioner David Rice. Good morning. We seek on behalf of Parks and Recreation approval to amend the suite of rules and regulations to include an additional requirement for a permit for commercial photographers as well as a release of liability. This requirement will be added to section two of the current rules and regulations.
Finance officer, Paul.
Commissioners, good morning. Uh, listed in your agenda this morning are three budget adjustments. Uh, the three budget adjustments are for the prior year and may have been posted outside of the boardroom.
Okay, thank you. County Ministers.
And next, we have requested Board of Commissioners gratify the designated contract for the month of February two thousand twenty-four. Motion is requested at this time.
So who?
Second it.
Commissioner Padora?
Yes.
Commissioner Heatherington?
Yes.
Commissioner Hess.
On behalf of Northeast Pennsylvania Alliance, approve to recommend the reappointment of Bob Carl, President and CEO of School Chamber of Commerce to the Needla Alliance Board of Directors for the term July first, two thousand twenty-four through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-six. And next, approve to recommend Courtney Flossner, Director of Workforce Development and Manufacturing Association to the Needla Alliance Board of Directors for the term July first, two thousand twenty-four through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-six. And lastly, on behalf of the Airport Authority Board, approve to appoint David Prue, Pine Grove, to fill the uninspired term of Noble Pondell Junior on the School County Airport Authority Board. Mr. Prue's term would expire December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-six.
Thanks, Gary. You want resources?
Uh, good morning, Commissioners. Uh, in nine one one communications, we have the appointment of Andy McCain, telecommunicator per D M. Rate is twenty dollars and that's effective three eleven twenty-four. Also in nine eleven, the appointment of Rebecca Howes, telecommunicator per D M. The rate is twenty, effective three eleven twenty-four. And finally, in nine eleven communications, the appointment of Michael Zendrowski as a telecommunicator per D M. The rate is twenty dollars. The effective rate is three eleven twenty-four. Motion is required for those three. Also in the prison, promotion of Corey Bowman to lieutenant position. The rate is sixty-seven thousand eight hundred thirty-seven and seventy-seven cents. That is effective three four twenty-four, coming from a correction officer. Motion is required on that one. And prison appointment of Cross Howe as a correction officer part-time. The rate is twenty-three point zero seven three zero, effective four nineteen twenty-four. And in maintenance, the appointment of William Eisenhardt as a general laborer. Rate is thirteen point nine four one three. That's effective three eighteen twenty-four. All appointments are pending. Drug tested physical were appropriate and all actions involving salary are for, for positions being created or pending salary board approval.
Okay, can I have a motion for the nine one ones communications?
For the three.
For the three?
All three. I'll make a motion for all three nine one ones for the, uh, for being telecommunicators.
Second it. One more question.
Commissioner Padora?
Yes.
Commissioner Heatherington?
Yes.
And Commissioner Hess.
Do you have a motion for the promotion of appointment in prison?
I'll make a motion to promote the carry Corey Bowman to the prison.
Now, second it. I'll question.
Commissioner Padora?
Yes.
Commissioner Heatherington?
Yes.
Commissioner Hess.
Now, do we need, do you need a motion for the maintenance upgrade?
I don't think that one would require.
That doesn't require a motion, okay.
Uh, informational items and recorder deeds, promotion of Deborah Moser to Systems Management Coordinator effective three eleven twenty-four, coming from a clerk status two. In domestic relations, the transfer of Danny Seduski, Secretary One, effective three eleven twenty-four, coming from clerk three, proponentary. Also in domestic relations, the appointment of Harley Mills as the Secretary One, effective three eleven twenty-four.
Thank you. Uh, can I have a motion on your. So move, help call.
Commissioner Ron, Ron Gatlin.
Oh, um, yeah, there were, I don't.
This morning, Commissioners, there was a bid opening. Uh, in connection with Bridge, uh, number one twenty-three and Court Clinton. Uh, that will be reviewed and awarded at future times.
Oh, okay. And then also, then, there's a correction. The Wednesday, March twentieth, twenty twenty-four work session meeting is in the evening, maybe at six P M. here in the Commissioners' Boardroom. The Commissioners' meeting, uh, thirteenth, March thirteenth, will be at ten A M. here.
Okay.
Now, a motion move there?
So move, sir.